Bring the meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Aparara?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Mayor Prokhorov-Burnard?
Here.
Mayor Bell?
Here. Stand for profit and things and property if you want to.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on which we stand under God, in whose name we take this oath.
Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would respectfully request that the council take an action to add an item on the agenda for your action and approval. And the basis of adding the item would be that there's a need for an immediate action and that need arose after the agenda was posted. You have a package before you. Essentially, what this has to do with is the senior project on Imperial Avenue that has been years in the making. And they've reached a point where they think they have all of their financing lined up. One piece of the financing has to do with a city obligation under the disposition and development agreement whereby the city would reimburse certain expenses associated with the development of the property. And so that's what this is about. Even though it is the subject of an agreement, because of the amount involved that you can that you see here in terms of it's in excess of $300,000, we would like the successor agency to take an action in accordance with the existing agreement. I think this is either the, I believe, the seventh?
Seventh draw down.
It's the seventh draw, so there have been six previous reimbursements. So this is a seventh and final reimbursement. But we would ask that you add that to the agenda and Ms. Gutierrez will provide the detail when the matter comes up.
Okay, let's just put that at the end, just past F5.
Mr. Mayor, if I can also pull F1.
Okay.
I can make a motion to approve those changes.
Okay.
Second.
The motion is second, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Attorney, any action taken in closed session?
Yes, thank you. The council discussed three items, item A1, A2, A3. A4, due to time constraints, has been moved to the next agenda. The first item, Conference and Three-O Property Negotiators, is listed in A1. Direction was given by council related to price and terms to the negotiator. The one item of existing litigation was discussed. Direction was given, no reportable action. And finally, one item of anticipated litigation was also discussed. Direction was given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Move on to C, Public Appearances. C1, Matters Not Appearing on the Agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Yes, Michelle, please come up.
Mr. Mayor, Michelle Hollinger, Victoria Homes, 179 Sylvia Court, Imperial. And it's been brought to my attention that I apologize, I haven't invited you all to see our projects out at Victoria Ranch since 2018. So it's been quite a long time, and I know that part of it has to do with the pandemic. So I'd like to do that for you now. I'm wondering if Monday or Tuesday next week would work for you guys. I have a flyer if I could give to have you guys pass out, as well as with the Planning Commission and any staff that would like to come. I know that we have been postponed, or Victoria Ranch has been postponed until the 21st, I believe, I believe, to go over Victoria Ranch's specific plan. And I think it would be in everyone's best interest if you actually physically went there and did a tour with us. So it's been a while. So I have some information with a model address, my phone number to RSVP. I have, again, two dates. After 4:00 PM, I'm available both times if it needs to be in stages. Or if it's another date, let me know and I will accommodate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you guys.
Okay. Anybody else not on the agenda like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm just going to move right through C2. We're going to move to D, Special Presentation. Yeah, I was going to say, hang on just for a second, I'm just going to read this through. No, I saw, I knew, I knew what was going on. I know I'm a dumb shit, but I know sometimes I know what's going on. So anyway.
No filter.
Well, just what it is. Special Presentation, September, Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Now you can come up.
Action, Mayor and Council, thank you for the time. I'd like to introduce a woman who's going to make a Zoom presentation here about ovarian cancer and their organization. It's about five minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Liz Nilson, and I'm representing the Clarity Foundation. We are a San Diego-based national ovarian cancer nonprofit. And I would like, if it's possible, can I share my screen and put some slides up? I'm just hoping that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about ovarian cancer awareness and the things to be aware of, and a little bit about the Clarity Foundation and how we help address some of the needs of women and families who are living with ovarian cancer. So let me go ahead and share my screen. And if you can confirm that you all can see it, that would be great.
Let's get it.
Wonderful, thank you. So ovarian cancer, it's a unique diagnosis, which really demands a unique approach. And let me share some facts and figures with you. Because when we talk about awareness of ovarian cancer, I mean that on two levels. I mean that on a personal level, what women need to know about the possibility of having ovarian cancer, and what folks like you need to know about the impact of ovarian cancer on communities like the city of Imperial, like cities all across California, across the US, across the world. So in the United States, about 22,000 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer each year. And cumulatively in the United States, that means that somewhere around 230 to 250 women are living with ovarian cancer as a chronic disease. And it is the fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths in women. And one of the things that's really unique about ovarian cancer is that it is very difficult to diagnose. There isn't a screening test for it. Women don't find out they have ovarian cancer by having their annual pap smear. That does not diagnose ovarian cancer. And the symptoms can be easily dismissed as being just sort of a normal, not to be concerned about symptom. Things like feeling bloated, feeling full, just feeling uncomfortable. And what we hear from women all the time, and one of the reasons why Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month is such an important time to get the word out, is that they knew something was wrong. They had trouble getting diagnosed. And by the time they were diagnosed, they were at stage three, stage four of ovarian cancer, and were immediately put into surgery and treatment and just the whirlwind that is cancer care. And so what we really want to stress is the importance of looking for those symptoms and identifying when something isn't right and pushing for a diagnosis, but also recognizing the need for support that women have after a diagnosis. And that's really where our organization comes in. And there are other organizations that are doing great work around ovarian cancer awareness and care across the United States. But what we do at the Clarity Foundation is we really look to improve the survival and the quality of life of women who are diagnosed, and try to instill more hope in them as they go through the experience of ovarian cancer. And we do that by providing them with the best science. We do that by providing compassion. We treat the whole person as we're talking to women and their families, and really do that from a patient and participant-centric place. And what we do is revolutionary, because we really provide one-on-one support, which women are not receiving, even in the very best cancer care centers. We talk to women who are at MD Anderson, who are at Johns Hopkins, who are at Sloan-Kettering, and they are receiving excellent care from their physicians, but they still need more. And that's really where Clarity comes in. We provide professional one-on-one support. We do educational content for women. We provide resources. We refer them to additional resources. And we have group support that we can also offer to women who want to be in the company of other women and families who have been diagnosed. And I think what really differentiates Clarity in the ovarian cancer space is really meeting women and families where they are and helping them with this journey. Because ovarian cancer, given the high likelihood of a recurrence, is not something that women have treated and are done with and look in the rearview mirror and say, well, cancer is behind me. They are often looking at the next scan and fearing what that might show. And so it's really important that support is there for them, for their entire lives as they are dealing with ovarian cancer as a chronic disease and not a one-time occurrence, because unfortunately, that is often just not the case. And I'll end by providing our contact information. And as I said, we are located in San Diego, but we do serve women nationwide. All of our services are free of charge and are delivered virtually. The education, the one-on-one support from counselors and scientists who really know the ovarian cancer at a very high expertise level. And our website is listed here, our phone number, our email, and of course, we're on all the socials, so we can be found that way as well. And I'll leave you with this thought, which is, the numbers for ovarian cancer may seem low, but I guarantee every single person in that room knows someone who's been impacted by ovarian cancer, whether it's you directly, or someone that was close to you, or maybe someone that you didn't know that well, but you still knew them and they were a part of your community. Ovarian cancer is in our communities, and it's impacting families every day. So I thank you for your time to bring awareness about this disease and the things that we can do to support women and families who are living through it.
Liz, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, could you also mention how San Diego does awareness for ovarian cancer?
Yes. So we, at Clarity, we have two main events, timeframes that we do different activities. And September being Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month is a main one. We have a virtual program called Who's Your Teal Woman? Teal, as you can see on my slide, is a main color of ovarian cancer, and an in-person teal woman event as well. And then in May, we have the Teal Revolution, which is a 5K celebratory walk that we invite women and families to come out and supporters to walk around Liberty Station and increase awareness about ovarian cancer in the month of May, prior to the summer, and then ovarian cancer month, Awareness Month in September. And, you know, we are always looking for opportunities to get in front of, you know, community groups like yours to get the word out, and just make sure people know about our services too. Because often, as I mentioned, even with the very best care, women just don't know where to go, and they don't know who to turn to for additional support and information and education.
They also light up the city, right, with teal lights?
Yes, we do. We light up the city, the county building, and the city council, or excuse me, the city hall in Chula Vista has been lit up and fountains around the county. And we also offer packages of teal ribbons that can be tied up in neighborhoods and in, you know, along main streets of cities across the US. And we encourage people to get those ribbons up there, take the pictures, get them up on social, and spread the word that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But what I'm asking, or for this council to consider, is supporting this. The ID Board was made aware of this this morning. And just to recognize it, proclaim it as the month. If you want to have ribbons, that apparently Clarity Foundation has some ribbons you could put on Main Street if you wanted to. Anything in your flyers, recognize it and tell people to be aware. And the Clarity Foundation is probably their closest place to go to to get support for anybody who's dealing with ovarian cancer.
Thank you, Dean.
Y'all, I think everybody got a copy of the proclamation.
Okay, I want to give this to you, read it, and then I'll be able to give it to you. And we do appreciate your time with this. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration.
Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, September 2022. Whereas almost 22,000 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer in the United States every year, and about 14,000 lose their lives. Whereas ovarian cancer is very treatable when detected early. Currently, 75% of new cases are not diagnosed until the disease is in its late stages of development, when treatment is less effective. With early detection, women have a survival rate of over 90%. Diagnosis in its later stages, however, dramatically reduces the chance of survival to just 25%. Whereas each year during September, women living with ovarian cancer, their families and supporters, along with patients, advocacy, organizations, and other, together raise awareness about ovarian cancer. And whereas knowledge is crucial to overcoming ovarian cancer. Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month offers us an invaluable opportunity to educate Americans about the symptoms and risk factors of the disease, to alert health care providers about the need for vigilance in recognizing those symptoms and risks early, and to promote increased funding and research into more effective methods of diagnose and treatment. The more we know about ovarian cancer, the more women and their families can live out their lives free from the shadow of this devastating disease. Whereas now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Imperial, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just like, go around. Sorry.
Ready, one, two, three.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dean.
Okay. All right, you can set agenda. All right, meeting consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time determined by the mayor. I got a motion?
Second.
A motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Skip F one. Moving on to F two, purchase of hatch maintenance service contract agreement.
This is the second year. We purchased the agreement back when the wastewater plant was new and first came online because of the volume and quantity of this type of Hawk equipment in that plant. It's proven to be valuable, both with troubleshooting and technical assistance, as well as their coming down and doing and performing routine maintenance on the equipment. It is shared with the water plant because the water plant does utilize Hawk turbid meters and some other things. So we're just simply asking that you renew the maintenance contract with the Hawk Service Corporation.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
A motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Move on to F three, labor compliance services for laboratory road widening.
Mayor and council members, the item for you is for labor compliance services for laboratory project. We received two proposals, one for labor compliance consultants of Southern California and the other one from Align Consulting. And staff recommends to award the contract to Labor Compliance Consultants of Southern California in the amount of $6,000. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments?
Is this the cheapest proposal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion?
Make a motion for approval of the labor compliance services for laboratory road widening project. Second.
I have a motion and second, please vote. Okay, moving on to F four. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, so we have. Oh, okay, so we have four yeses, one abstained. And the one that abstained is Mr. Tucker with a total of five votes.
Okay. Move on to F four. Subject Morning Star subdivision unit 1B final map.
Mayor and council members, staff has reviewed the final map for the Morning Star subdivision unit 1B. The approved cost estimate for the offset improvements is $2,418,206.31, which is included in the subdivision agreement. It's part of the package. The security of the improvements will be in the form of a first lien position, specific real estate property, it's similar as other subdivisions. And staff recommends approval of the final map for unit 1B for Morning Star subdivision. And staff recommends to authorize city clerk to record maps, the final map and related documents. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Make a motion for approval of the final map and subdivision agreement for Morning Star subdivision unit 1B.
A motion?
Second.
I have a motion and second.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, well, before we finish up the vote, go ahead then.
All right.
So.
I brought in the actual map that shows the retention base in the correct way. And I believe that the one that you have in your packet is oriented wrong. And O'Tons assured me that that's not going to be a problem, that we can record it this way. And I just want to make sure I get it on the record that we have the right map. I just didn't get here. Number two is also, we have a set of approved improvement plans that we're using for the project. And it goes from the one we're currently working on, which is 1A, and all of 1B, which is the one you're working on now. So it's the same set of plans, no additional changes to those that I know of. So I will make sure that's clear. And then I want to understand this bond thing or non-bond thing. It says in here that, I'm kind of reading it like you have to do both. Am I reading that wrong? So it's just a deed of trust?
It's a deed of trust, it's a deed of trust in little bond, as explained to.
So you have the choice, but if we choose a deed of trust, then that's all we do. You accept it obviously, and then you first trust deed holder. And when we get a loan to build some houses on the deal, you'll take a second for that portion.
Or subwarrantate.
Yeah.
Yes, first to second, correct.
Okay, that's it. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Now we have the motion and a second.
Can I rescind my motion, though, with the changes of the map that Mr. Robyn presented instead? Okay. And then do I need to do this in two motions?
We'll pass this one and then we'll go to the second one.
If you would like to take it all as one, you absolutely can.
Can?
You just need to, yes, you just need to read it into the.
Okay, so.
I kind of wanted you to do one at a time, but that's okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we'll do it one at a time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, there we go. So we have the motion and a second for the first one. Please vote. That's what old people do.
I wouldn't know.
So, Mr. Robyn, I didn't get a chance to drive that subdivision. Very nice. I like the white roads.
All right, you may place your votes. Little technical difficulty. If not, they show up here and let us know. Motion passes five zero.
Great.
I make a motion to authorize the city clerk to refine, or to record final maps and related documents.
A motion and second, please vote.
All right, you may place your votes. Motion passes five zero.
Okay, F five, cancellation of regular meeting and continuation of the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's exactly as it sounds. There's a contingent of yourselves that will be attending the annual League of California Cities Conference. In recognition of that, we do recommend canceling the first regular meeting in September, taking place on the seventh. In addition to that, there has been a public hearing noticed for the Victoria Ranch specific plan amendment for your consideration. This action would, in fact, continue that public hearing. We would re-notice that to be taking place on September 21st.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, now we're going to take off our hat and become a successor agency. Okay, discussion action, approval of draw number seven to the EAH Corporate for pre-development expenses.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chairman and Agency Board. This next item before you is draw number seven for EAH. It is the final payment of the $1.6 million, I'm sorry, $1.3 million DDA, which is Development Disposition Agreement. They are getting ready to fund this next first week of September. So this is the last missing component that they need in order to finalize their funding.
Any questions, comments?
Do we have an estimated completion date on this project?
For the, it's six to eight months.
Find us the location.
The location of the project. It is on Pearl Avenue, it's between 11th and 10th Street. It's on the west side of the barbershop, I don't know if you, in school, no.
It was close to the. It's on that side.
And for, for the old people in town, that was Wendell Trucking and kind of crafty. Havens and Sons property, as well as Cookies Diner. Yep. Right across the street from Holby's Gas Station, that's exactly right. So, okay, we have, do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Going to adjourn this meeting until the regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM.